Hello and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council's regular meeting for Tuesday, September 1st, 2020. My name is Kim Clark-Baskin and I'm the Assistant City Clerk. With us today, we have our sign language interpreter, Logan Showalter. The following is a list of legislation to be presented by Pittsburgh City Council. Councilman Anthony Coghill presents Bill Number 656. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Works to enter into an agreement or the use of existing agreements between the City of Pittsburgh and Studio Zewey for the professional landscape architectural services for Homewood Park infrastructure updates, cost not to exceed $1,630,014. Bill Number 657. Resolution granting unto Robert J. Lewis, their successors and assigns the privilege license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense a new projecting sign to the front of the existing building at 1344 Fifth Avenue, First Ward, Sixth Council District. Councilwoman Deb Gross presents Bill Number 658. Resolution adopting the plan revision to the City of Pittsburgh's official sewage facilities plan for a safe place to stay project, which will involve interior and exterior renovation to the existing eight-story building located at 326 Third Avenue into office space on floors one through six and a rooming house on floors seven and eight for a safe place to stay program. The building address is 326 Third Avenue. Councilman Daniel Lavelle presents Bill Number 659. Resolution amending Resolution 401 of 2017, which authorizes the mayor and the Director of Finance to enter into a professional services agreement with CHR Catering Company, Inc., for the purposes of providing the City of Pittsburgh with beverage and snack food vending services throughout all the vending machines. Councilwoman Erica Strausberger presents Bill Number 660. Resolution amending Resolution 642 of 2017, which authorize the mayor and the Director of the Department of Finance to enter into an agreement with RT Lawrence Corporation for the provision of a remittance processing system. Bill Number 661. Resolution amending Resolution 738 of 2019, which provided for a professional services agreement with NCR Corporation to provide citywide credit, debit, and e-check payment services for the collection of various programs and permitting fees for the City of Pittsburgh by exercising the option to extend the term of the agreement for one year at a cost and updating the name of the vendor. Councilman Bobby Wilson presents Bill Number 662. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the Director of City Planning to enter into memorandum of understanding with the Natural Resources Defense Council in support of the Food Matters Regional Initiative. The study will be at no cost to the city. Council President Teresa Kell Smith presents Bill Number 663. Resolution appointing Mr. Chaz Kellum to serve as a Commissioner for the City of Pittsburgh Commission on Human Relations for a term to expire August 30th, 2024. Mr. Kellum will be serving in a seat held by Ms. BJ Sampson, who has resigned. Bill Number 664. Communication from Kevin Paulus, Director of the Office of Management and Budget, submitting acting pay approval on behalf of Finance for Brandon Jones, per the acting pay policy revised in June 2018. And Bill Number 665. Communication from Kevin Paulus, Director of the Office of Management and Budget, submitting acting pay approval on behalf of Public Works for Paul Abel, Keith McCarthy, John Minert, per the acting pay policy revised in June 2018. That concludes the reading of the legislation for introduction. Thank you and have a great day.
Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of City Council for Tuesday, September 1st, 2020. Council will continue to meet virtually on Tuesdays and Wednesdays at 10:00 a.m. until further notice. All meetings will be livestreamed on the City Channel's YouTube channel. Will the clerk please take the rule call?
Reverend Burgess.
Here.
Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Kraus.
Here.
Mr. Lavelle.
Here.
Mr. O'Connor.
Here.
Ms. Strausberger.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mrs. Kell Smith, President.
Here.
Non-members present.
Thank you. As we're doing together from our remote locations, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, our next order of business is proclamations and we also have a will of council. Can we have the first proclamation, Madam Clerk? I think it's Councilman Lavelle's.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number 667. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby commend and thank the partnership between Fogo De Chao Restaurant and the YMCA of Greater Pittsburgh for providing services to insecure families during the COVID-19 pandemic.
You've heard the reading, is there any? Oh, I'm sorry, all in favor?
Motion to approve.
I'm sorry, motion to approve, I'm sorry. Motion to approve. Seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Does Councilman Lavelle, did you want to say anything?
No, thank you.
Thank you, okay. And then the next is the will of council for Councilman Coghill.
Bill Number 668. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh calls upon its representatives and citizens to take the person's first pledge and commit to reducing the stigmatization of individuals with a substance use disorder.
And a motion to approve?
No move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any discussion, Councilman Coghill?
Yes, Madam President. You know, as you know, all of our districts plagued with some sort of opioid issues, particularly me up in Carrick and Councilman Kraus is part of his district in Mount Oliver and down Brownsville Road there. So this really is about the verbiage centered around it. You know, we've supported measures like Prevention Point and everything we can do to really curb it and numbers have shown that, you know, it's turning around. We hope that it stays consistent. But I think most of you, I think you all got this and I'd appreciate anybody who signs up and it's really about taking a pledges to verbiage around the stigma of, you know, drug use, so, thanks.
Hey, Councilman?
Yes.
So when we sign up, how do we submit this? Can we do it online or do we have to actually do a physical? You know, because you attach the application, if you will, to the proclamation. Do we do it physically or is there a place to do it online?
That's a good question. You know, I'm not quite sure, but I'll pick it up at your house if you'd like.
You got a deal.
Okay, thank you. And then our next order of business is public comment. And I would like to remind, I would like to remind everyone of the rules of council states that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberations, which are maybe before City Council. May we have the first speaker, please? And the first speaker is Ikhanah Mal Mekina. I hope I said that right, let's spell it just in case. I'll see.
You're muted?
You're muted, could you please unmute your button?
Okay, greetings, can you hear me now?
Yes, good morning, thank you.
Greetings, everyone, and greetings to the City Council members. I greet you in peace and in love. The time is now to be intentional about how the Indigenous people will be included in the conversation on all things concerning America and specifically how foreigners are to conduct themselves in our land. We are the Aboriginal American people and we have various treaties, contracts, declarations, and covenants that have set the tone and laid the foundation as the agreement for how people are to conduct themselves in our land, such as the Constitution. And that is the foundation of how people are to act in America. This is the land of the free and the home of the brave. We will not tolerate the current rhetoric that is happening in America. Long ago, when Europeans came to America from all walks of life, fleeing from the tyranny and slaughter, starvation, from the land in which they were born, well, it seems as if they had forgot why they came to America in the first place, to pursue their liberty and their freedom in a peaceful manner according to the Great Law of Peace. Police brutality has no place in our land. We urge you to rid our land of terror, oppression, and injustice. You do have the power to fix this. To do otherwise is to be a co-conspirator with those who inflict these terrors upon the Indigenous people of the land. Approximately one week ago, shots rang out on the north side of Pittsburgh in a housing project, striking and killing a one-year-old boy and several others have lost their lives around the city. Something must be done to address the public crisis that exists all across the inner cities of America. People aren't safe even inside of their own homes. We urge City Council to work with us to open up the dialogue, to allow healing to take place, address the multiple murders in the city that have taken place before the cameras were rolling for people such as Johnny Gammitch, Gary Jackson, Bernard Sanders, David Streeter, who all were murdered by the police. Also to include my brother Jerome Smith, who tragically lost his life with his good friend Michelle.
Thank you. And we have the next speaker, which was the name I called first, actually. Ikhanah Mal Mekina. I'll spell that last part, M-A-L-N-A-K-I-N-A, I see you there.
I think that's Ikhanah, that time, I think it's Koda.
Yeah, no, she just spoke, so now we're waiting. Yeah, I called the first name, but now we're waiting for the second name, is.
Greetings, greetings. Is this for Koda, K-O-T-A?
So there's two people in this one, okay, go ahead.
Yeah. Yeah, greetings, I am Koda Key Bay, the Inca of the Iroquois Confederacy of the Aboriginal American People. And I would like you guys to listen to the needs of Aboriginal people and to honor our government-to-government relationship as established within the Constitution, which provides for not only state, federal, but also local municipalities as well. And we would like the City of Pittsburgh and need the City of Pittsburgh to hold themselves accountable to your oaths that you have taken to support the Constitution and other lawful documents, such as our judicial personality of Aboriginal and Indigenous peoples, which states and municipalities must recognize fully the judicial personality of Indigenous and Aboriginal peoples respecting our forms of organization and promoting the full exercise of rights recognized in several declarations, one being the American Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous Peoples, as well as the United Nations Declaration on Rights of Indigenous Peoples. Municipalities codes and policies have created several laws to make our peoples stateless and we have a right, being Aboriginal and Indigenous to the land, to reject assimilation. And our peoples have the right to maintain, express, and freely develop our cultural identity in all respects, free from any external attempt at forced assimilation through such documents as birth certificates and reclassification over the years. And this is our reaching out to City Council members, as well as anybody else listening on the line, to start to work and to promote together the rights of Indigenous peoples between the municipality and Indigenous peoples of this land of America, and particularly the Pittsburgh area, for a more harmonious future. Now I yield my time, thank you.
Thank you. And then we did have, again, and this is what I have on my sheet, is Ikhanah Mal Mekina.
She was your first speaker.
So there were, so there were two Ikhanas? Okay, okay.
Yeah.
I see another one connected, that's all, just want to make sure.
Yeah.
With the same first name, different last name. Okay. So we'll move on to our next order of business, which is the presentation of papers. Seeing those, the further registered speakers, we'll move on to Reverend Burgess, Chair of Urban Recreation.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you. Councilman Coghill, Chair of Public Works.
Madam President.
Thank you.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 656. Resolution authorizing the mayor and Director of the Department of Public Works to enter into an agreement between the City and Studio Zewey for the professional landscape architectural services for Homewood Park infrastructure upgrades at a cost not to exceed $1,630,014. Bill Number 657. Resolution granting unto Robert J. Lewis, their successors and assign the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense a new projecting sign to the front of the existing building at 1344 Fifth Avenue, First Ward, Sixth Council District.
And Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Intergovernmental Affairs.
Madam President.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 658. Resolution adopting the plan revision to the City of Pittsburgh's official sewer facilities plan for a safe place to stay project, which will involve interior and exterior renovations to the existing eight-story building located at 326 Third Avenue into office space on floors one through six and a rooming house on floors seven and eight for a safe place to stay program. The building address is 326 Third Avenue in the First Ward.
Councilman Kraus, Chair of Human Resources.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you. Councilman Lavelle, Chair of Finance and Law.
Madam President.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number 659. Resolution amending Resolution 401, which authorizes the mayor and Director of Finance to enter into a professional services agreement with CHR Catering Company, Inc., for the purposes of providing the city with beverage and snack food vending services through vending machine.
Councilman O'Connor, Chair of Public Safety Services.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you. Councilwoman Strausberger, Chair of Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Strausberger presents Bill Number 660. Resolution amending Resolution 642, which authorize the mayor and Director of the Department of Finance to enter into an agreement with RT Lawrence Corporation for the provision of a remittance processing system. Bill Number 661. Resolution amending Resolution Number 738, which provide for a professional services agreement with NCR Corporation to provide citywide credit, debit, and e-check payment services for the collection of various programs and permitting fees for the city by exercising the option to extend the term of the agreement for one year at no additional cost and updating the name of the vendor.
Thank you. Councilman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
Madam President, good morning.
Thank you.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 662. Resolution authorizing the mayor and Director of the City planning to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Natural Resource Defense Council in support of the Food Matters Regional Initiative. The study will be at no cost to the city.
Thank you. And then myself, I have one appointment, Chair of Hearings, I have one appointment for the Commission on Human Relations, Madam Clerk.
Council President Kell Smith presents Bill Number 663. Resolution appointing Mr. Chaz Kellum to serve as a Commissioner for the City of Pittsburgh Commission on Human Relations for a term to expire August 30th, 2024. Mr. Kellum will be serving in a seat held by Mrs. BJ Sampson, who has resigned.
Thank you. And the will of council to interview?
Yeah, motion to interview, please.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And Madam Clerk, can we work with Councilman Kraus to get that scheduled? Because I know he's the one to call for it. We have two communications for acting pay.
Council President. Council President also presents Bill Number 664. Communication from Kevin Paulus, Director of the Office of Management and Budget, submitting acting pay approval on behalf of Finance for Brandon Jones, per the active pay policy revised in June of 2018. Bill Number 665. Communication from Kevin Paulus, Director of the Office of Management and Budget, submitting an acting play approval on behalf of Public Works for Paul Abel, Keith McCarthy, John Minert, per the acting pay policy revised in June 2018.
Thank you. Can we have a motion to read, receive, and file for both?
So moved.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And our next order of business is reports to committee for final action. Councilman Coghill, Committee on Public Works.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 654. Report of the Committee on Public Works for August 26, 2020, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 628. Resolution granting unto the Carnegie Library, their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense a new projecting sign at 612 Smithfield Street in the Second Ward, Sixth Council District.
You've heard the reading of the title of the bill, is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing then the bills are now ready for final action. All in favor, if either name is called, those opposed will vote no. Please call them.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strausberger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson. Mrs. Kell Smith, President. Eyes nine, no zero.
Bills haven't received the legally required number of votes, it's finally passed. We have Councilwoman Deborah Gross, Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs.
Madam President.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 655. Report of the Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs for August 26, 2020, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 437. Resolution adopting plan revision to the City of Pittsburgh's official sewer facilities plan for the Forte condominiums, 2637 through 2641 Penn Avenue.
You've heard the reading of the title of the bills, is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing then the bills are ready for final passage. All in favor, if either name is called, those opposed will vote no. But please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strausberger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith, President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes, it's finally passed. It moves on us on to motions and resolutions. Meeting announcements, we have council will hold a pre-agenda interview for the Directorship of the Department of Finance tomorrow morning at 9:30 a.m. with the Standing Committee's meeting to immediately follow at 10:00 a.m. As a reminder, if you would like to register to speak at the meetings, please call the Clerk's office at 412-255-2138 by 9:00 a.m. Wednesday morning. You may also submit written testimony by email to cityclerksoffice@pittsburghpa.gov. And also council will continue to meet virtually on Tuesdays and Wednesdays at 10:00 a.m. for public hearings and post-agendas until further notice. All meetings will be livestreamed on the City Channel's YouTube channel. Do we have anything from the members?
Madam President.
Yes, Reverend Burgess.
Um. First of all, you know, we were grateful for our Vice President and our Democratic Presidential nominee for coming and to our city to address, in some ways, some of the issues of race relations. I had the, I was driving yesterday to Westmoreland County. And I think sometimes because we live in Pittsburgh in a fairly liberal, democratic city, we forget that it is not representative of our country, not even of our region. As I was driving through Westmoreland County, there were huge Trump signs everywhere. There were billboards, there were banners, there were yard signs. It was just flooded. And then I was, you know, and I don't think about this so often, but Trump is arguably the most overtly racist misogynistic president in modern history. Yet, in November, Trump will receive the majority of the vote for white Americans. So I think that we don't think about that, that sometimes, I know people get tired of me arguing about race relations in this country. I've been arguing, you know, for ten years now, they are right in saying this, but the majority of this country, the majority of non-minorities have a significant problem with race. They could not vote for this president without having that underlying significant implicit bias. And that's why the work is so important. And it is, it has to be primary, not secondary, not third of all. As I said before, black being. As I say before, black, being black underscores every other problem. If you're poor, you have bad outcomes. If you're black and poor, your outcomes will be worse. If you're gay, lesbian, and trans, sometimes you will have bad outcomes. But if you're black, gay, lesbian, and trans, your outcome will be worse. If you are, if you are, if you are, whatever it is, you know, you add the, if you're a woman, your outcomes can be bad, especially a single mother with children. Your outcomes will be bad. But if you add black to it, and it is, it is the issue of our time. It is the single most important issue. It has been. It's just that, you know, because we have the majority of our country, profits from the, from institutional systematic racism has profited for 300 years. They never want to have the conversation. This now is the moment of my life. This is the moment of our country. This is the moment of our times. And we have to be honest that our country is indeed embedded, saturated, institutionalized with races and racist actions. This doesn't mean now, doesn't mean that they're bad people. I want to, and I always make that clear. I think the book White Fragility talks about this, that just because you do racist things doesn't make you a bad person. You do it based on your own inculturation because it's in you. It's, you know, you grew up with it. And you don't think of yourself that way. You, you know, you're not a racist. You just, it's okay. It's okay to attack black men without proof and evidence. It's okay, you know, to shoot them, to lynch them. It's okay to, you know, invent vicious rumors about them. It's okay because that's your culture. And I think we, in, we, it has, we have to call it out. It has to be our ongoing conversation. Second of all, I think it's also time, and I want to, I do want to commend the president for, for just the way, you know, she has us working together to deal with this issue in terms of policing. And I'll talk more about this probably over the next, next few months. The problem is not the police. We have one of the best police forces in the United States because of its, its, its training, the changes we've made over the last 10 years. We have one of the best police forces in the United States. The problem is not the police. The problem is policing. Policing, it's nature, it's neo-military nature, the way it's trained, the way that they're, you know, that we get ex-military people and give them a priority to become police. All of that neo-military mindset of policing, maybe its time is over. Europe doesn't have this view of policing. There are various places in the world where this, this model of police doesn't exist, but exists in, in the United States that is pretty much connected to racism. It was designed from its beginning to be a place of keeping black people in their place. And so that it has these outcomes is not surprising. So I just want to give really more of our, our listening public a view of what we must do, working for it. We have to have uncomfortable conversations, you know? Budget season's coming up, and we're going to have very frank, uncomfortable conversations about what it means to move our city forward, what it means to make Black Pittsburgh matters. And I'm probably now going to start talking about it every day because it is the moment, it cannot, this is the, this is the issue of our lifetime. What are we going to do specifically to make Pittsburgh an inclusive place, knowing that it is deeply rooted? That it, no matter, and we have a great mayor, we have great, we have mostly a great council. But it is, it is, it shows its head, it raises its ugly head over and over and over again. And so we have to take it on head-on. And so I do not mean to be offensive. I just think this is the moment to have this conversation. I also want to thank Erica Strasburger. I don't know that people know how thoughtful she has been on this issue. And I think has been a clear voice for inclusion and for equity. So I, I think we work together. It's going to be hard, it's going to be uncomfortable, but that's what we do. This is the moment that we can make great change. But knowing that the change we make will be different than the rest of the country, right? There are pockets of the country, the vast majority of, of, I guess, said before, of places in this country, you know, have real significant issues. And I just, driving through Westmoreland County, I was just, I wasn't ready for it. It was overwhelming to me, right? It was just so in your face. And there was, you know, others, less obvious signs. I won't go into that, but of, of not feeling comfortable. I was driving with my niece, and she, she didn't feel comfortable. I didn't feel comfortable. It just was overwhelming to me. I just didn't expect it because, you know, I'm in Pittsburgh. You don't see that here. But when you drive out of our city, you go a few miles, you're going to see in your face this, this sort of culture where Trump is the cheerleader of, of law and order, keep them in their place, lock them up, throw away the key. So I wanted to at least say that because I had that experience yesterday. And, and how important it is to stay in this moment, in this issue, week after week after week. Thank you for this moment and for that diatribe. It just, it just, you know, it just stunned me yesterday.
Thank you, Reverend. Do we have any other members? I'm going to add to that then. I just want to say that, well, actually, we actually have a lot of Trump signs on this side of town. So I think that there's a lot going on in the city. And yes, I mean, it's easy to say it's in this, it's in the rural communities and areas outside of the Allegheny County area, but that's not actually accurate. I mean, you can drive around here, you can listen to people. I think people were just fed up on all sides and looking for something extreme and on both sides. And I think that, that the reason I want us to work together is because I think that we'll get to a place where all sides are represented, and we come to a middle ground somewhere where we make sure that we're accomplishing the goals that we want collectively. And, you know, I think that we have to have some uncomfortable conversations. But what I want us to do is have those conversations, I want us to have those conversations. I want us to be able to talk about things that we need to change and things, and things we want to change. I don't want to see us throwing legislation out without a real comprehensive conversation and a look at what we need to change in terms of policing and other things across the city. I mean, little things that I've talked to Chief of Staff Gilman about, and he did make some changes on having to have a driver's license to be hired in the city of Pittsburgh. When, you know, you might have four people who would be in a truck to do public works things. And we're preventing people from being hired if they don't have a driver's license. And oftentimes, it is in the minority community where people don't have a driver's license. So I think things like that, it can't just be policing. If we're going to really make a change, it has to be, we have to look at everything. And we have to really make sure that we're hearing all voices, even those who disagree. And I think that we've got to come to some way that we may either help people understand or work to understand better ourselves what we need to do. So I'm really ready to have those conversations. I just want to make sure that we're doing it together so that we're really representing the people and not our own agendas. So with that said, there's no other comments from members? Can I have a motion to excuse the absent member, approve her minutes, and adjourn the meeting?
Sir, moved.
Okay.
Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Be safe.